I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This is the Firehouse Building Committee Public Hearing, September 11th, 2023, in the Winter High School Auditorium. A roll call. Council President LaTieri, to this meeting, myself, Scott Riley, Paul Flanagan, Karen Chars, Frank Constantino, Kim Dimes, Tom Giudina, Josh Castellano, Jill Doerr, Town Manager Marino, Larry Powers, Chris Boyce, Joe Aiello, Charles Flanagan, Jonathan Demoral, and Honorary Member Dick Banks. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Those remain standing after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Being that this is September 11th, I'd like to please observe a moment of silence for the 22nd anniversary of the September 11 attacks. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven American souls that were lost that day, including three hundred and forty-three members of the New York City Fire Department. Thank you. Please be seated. Also joining us from Castle Booze are Michael McCann, can I say that correctly? Close enough, and Eric Royce. Thank you for joining us. As a matter of housekeeping, emergency exits, the exit that you came in, the entrance, and there's an emergency exit to my right. This is being broadcast live on WCAT and will be available on YouTube within 48 hours. And now calling to order a public hearing. If anybody is looking to be heard for the public comment, please stand, state your precinct and address, and the floor is yours. This is your opportunity to speak to us. You've listened to us through several meetings, and we'd like to hear from you.
Hi, Captain, I'm Ms. Puccio, 49 Waldemar. I honestly have nothing prepared to say because I've been to the meetings. But I would like to say that I'm really appreciative, and I think the town should be really appreciative of the engagement that this committee has done when people have come to the meetings and talked and asked questions. You don't technically, you know, by meeting law need to respond, but you have, and I'm just grateful for that, and I think the town should be grateful for that. I think this is very disappointing as I look around here, and I don't see anyone here. I understand that people have obligations and, you know, different things, but I think what the town residents cannot do is to say they didn't have equal opportunity to speak to you guys. They're volunteering your time because you've readily made it available to people. So just as a resident and someone that cares, I thank you all, and I think it would be, I'd be remiss to not say to our firefighters today, God bless you all, and thank you for everything you do, especially today. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Yalorin Law, precinct two. I live right on Morton Street, and it's almost like a dragway right now. We don't have a lot of police there seeing what's going on, but the cars, the kids riding dirt bikes without licenses, not registered, there's a lot of things going on right on the Morton Street. And I was hoping to see if there was a way to get a speed bump to slow them down because it's like they're trying to beat the lights to get wherever they're going. And the other question is with DCR, do we have the contract with DCR to maintain that property?
That's not, with all due respect, that's not the scope of this meeting, but I can certainly pass that information on and have somebody from the Police Department or TSAC reach out to you. So we have your contact information.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Carol Meach, precinct two.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you state your name again, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you state your name again, please?
Sure, Carol Meach, precinct two. I have a couple of questions about, I think it's time to talk about the money side of The middle school is the middle school with plan for a rec center. It's a phenomenal plan. How much money do we have to put in before the rec center? Like, do we have to do the demolition of that building is a question I have, and the reason I'm bringing it up here is because we're also talking about buying property on the Kirby Street, you know, with the Kirby House and the Watermark Building, which I think that's the best location for, from everything that I've seen and read so far. So they're not linked what they are because of how, you know, we've communicated, people are kind of putting it together. So if we could talk about that, that would be great. And then I was really bothered at the last meeting when we saw the WCAT videos and that our firefighters have trouble showering within an hour. Is there anything we can do in the meantime? Bring in temporary showers, bring in, you know, a mobile unit that can sit next to a building. It's eye-opening to what they go through in debt, so thank you to firefighters, thanks for all the input, and I hope I think that we're negligent if we don't pass this new proposal, so thank you for it.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Council President LaTieri to address the finance issue that you questioned you would ask.
So we'll start with the project at hand, which is the fire station. There are acquisition costs, there are demolition costs involved with the fire station. All those costs are included in the projections for the project, so we say it's a $36 to $40 million project, that's inclusive of everything. As far as the middle school project, the proposal there is for a sports complex along with three townhouses at the top of Waldemar to complete that neighborhood. The cost for the town on that project would be the demolition of the buildings. The cost of the construction of the facilities would be with the partner that would partner with the town. The townhouse is a totally separate thing, somebody would come in and build the townhouses for themselves. So, yeah, the only cost involved with the town on that, which would not require a debt exclusion, is just the demolition. We are also in the process, we have been for the past several months, along with the town manager, trying to secure funds from the state that might help us with that demolition. But when we put out an RFP for the middle school, it will be for a clean site, so the site will be clean for them to do. And again, the project at hand, the Public Safety Bill, and thank you very much for your comments. And again, all the costs are inclusive, so if people say, oh, it's a $36 to $40 million project, but then we have to buy the land, then we have to demolish buildings, all those costs are included in. And there's also contingencies within that. If something came up, there's a 10% or 15% contingency within that for the project itself. And then the chief will talk about the showers.
A temporary shower or something like that outside the facility would be probably untenable in the wintertime. It's something, if it really had to be done, we have the ability to gross decontamination in mass group decontamination. The showering within the hour in the current facility that we have is not possible. We have one shower for a dozen people to come back, and that's the way it's been for a very long time.
You know, yeah, the new building is going to be two years away probably, right?
In the best case scenario.
Right, so how do we take care of the firefighters today?
We continue to operate the way we are in the present, and if need be, we can do some mass group gross decontamination, but that's the best we can do right now. A temporary facility, especially in the cold weather, would be impossible.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think outside of the lines.
Appreciate that.
And just to go back on your finance piece, there, which we'll talk about, I'm sure if there's questions, there is a website that is up and running now. It's www.winterfirestation.com, and it is, there's an interactive piece to it, it's a very informative piece, it has videos, it has clips from these meetings, it has the full meetings, but one of the tabs on there that has been frequented quite a bit since it just opened is the finance piece. So you can go to a finance tab, and you could either put in the assessed value of your house, or you could literally use a slide bar and slide it to the number that it is, and it will give you the cost of this project. And, you know, we've talked about debt exclusions versus a Prop 2.5 override, you know, a Prop 2.5 override is infinite, it's just going to go into the future, where a debt exclusion is just like a mortgage, you're paying for it until the mortgage is paid off, and then it comes off the tax rolls. So the interactive piece will allow you to see what the burden will be to the taxpayer for the cost of this project. Also, what we've done is there's two previous debt exclusions, which will be coming off the tax rolls quickly when this starts. So if this was to pass, it wouldn't hit the tax rule completely until fiscal '26. The borrowing would go in increments as you needed throughout the project. So there will also be an interactive piece because the Atthe Cummings School comes off the tax rolls in fiscal '25, and then Miller Field comes off the tax rolls in early fiscal '31 or '2. So it will show you the net effect. So as those come off the tax rolls, for example, the average house in this project, the average house in Winter is assessed at $625,000, so if you slid the bar to $625,000, it will say your tax increase would be $456.25. And then it would show you the net increase after the ATC School came off the tax rolls, which is next year, and then after Miller Field came off, and that $456 would go down, don't quote me exactly, something like $280 a year.
Forty-five percent.
Yeah, so it's a 45% savings when those two debt exclusions mature.
So you brought up an interesting thing that I can think about, and that is the debt exclusion as opposed to the 2.5 override. Would a 2.5 override help us with the phase two?
No, phase two of this project, which would be explained at our next public hearing, which is September 25th, and we will unveil phase two of this project, which would be another debt exclusion. It would not be an override. An override is going to go on in perpetuity. You don't want to just continue to pay for something that's already been paid for, right? So this beautiful middle high school that we're in right now will come off the tax rolls in 2040, and that was a $40 million override that we did back in 2016, that didn't hit the tax rolls really until 2018. But no, if a phase two was to, it would have to go through the same process, we would show the project, talk about its merits, and then it would go to the ballot for a debt exclusion. Ultimately, you need the taxpayers to understand, because there's a burden that we're putting on the taxpayers for this. And, you know, Winter's such a beautiful quaint town, one of the negatives of Winter is that we don't have, which is a positive, I think, but we don't have a lot of commercial business, so the tax burden is really on the residents. So, you know, that's why we thought a phased approach is much more easily digestible to people.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yalorin Law, precinct two. You said that you had reached out to Massport. Did you reach out to the MWRA because you're their first response as well?
I did not say I reached out to Massport. I said we've reached out to entities to try to help us with demolition of the middle school.
No, not tonight. I was saying on another meeting, I thought I heard you say that you did reach out to Massport for our funding.
Oh, Massport's been very helpful to us in the past with the fire department, and I'm sure even past Chief Flanagan could talk about what Massport and MWRA has done for us in terms of that. In terms of funding the firehouse, no.
What about the MWRA? Because they use our roads continuously, and again, we're their first response.
They do, and we do have a mitigation pilot agreement with them, payment lower taxes, that they do pay us a substantial amount of money each year for that, but it's always, like everything else, it's always open up to negotiation, right?
When the very first MWRA agreement was penciled, the MWRA gave the fire department $250,000 a year into our operating budget. As times got tough during Proposition 2.5 and those other years, the town absorbed that money into the general fund. So if you take it, you know, by today's dollars, it's not as much, but the fire department budget was less of a burden at the time on the town's budget, so they have added, and, you know, when we're desperate, as the chief will tell you, we can go to the MWRA. Last year, we had a problem on Taft's and Shirley Street. The residents of Point didn't think that was a safe intersection, and we went to the MWRA. Granted, you're there responsible for a lot of vehicles on Point Shirley, but they went to $116,000 to move that stop sign to a point where you could look back at, you know, the old Holy Rosary Church and see if anything's coming. So they truly, you know, not just because I'm on the board, they are truly partners, whether we have a snowstorm and our streets can't be opened or anything like that, they're there for us all the time. But it's hard to go after asking the money, we're going to move the firehouse further away from their plant.
Well, then, you guys are very nasty, you do a great job, so I give applause to all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing, Mr. Chairman? I heard on the radio this morning that on the State House floor on Wednesday, there's going to be a bill come up to subsidize municipal firehouses. It has come up before and been defeated, but maybe right after 9/11, and there's multiple towns that have firehouses from the 1800s that are no longer usable, and so hopefully there'll be some action on the House floor on Wednesday, which will assist our project.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Can Paul provide that information about the State House issue as far as statewide subsidies to fire departments? Is that what you're saying?
The bill's coming up this Wednesday. I know very little about it, other than I heard on the radio.
You don't know who the, okay.
Don't know anything.
Is that something that...
I saw a story linked to it, started last week on NECM. I saw it last week, it was out of a story about the Melrose Fire Station.
So most likely that counts.
And the bill was, they said the bill was coming up on the floor, didn't have a date, but now the former chief Flanagan said it's the 18th.
Would either of our reps, Lydia Edwards or Jeff Turco, have information that they could provide to this committee and, you know, to the town in general? I mean, it should be relevant, I think.
We could certainly reach out to them.
The town of Melrose just passed. They are looking at three fire stations and a police station. I think one or two of them might be a rehab, and the other two or three are new, and they're doing it in a phased approach. It got passed by the town, by town meeting, and it's $125 million, but it's a phased approach, so it's over a six-year period, so they're going to build one, relocate the work of the firemen and the policemen to another building, and then they're going to finish that building and then go to the other one. So it's a six or seven-year project, it's going to cost $120 million. So when you look at it, they're doing four facilities for about $30 million apiece, but one or two of them are rehabs, and the other two are new, and they're smaller in scope and size, but, you know, I think what they're doing is to try to get ahead, because if you look at the cost in this, and the chief, the chief could talk a little bit about the stations that he's visited, because I think it's great for people to take a look at, Lexington especially, and Woburn, but when you look at Lexington, Lexington was opened in 2020, which means it started probably 2016 or '17 when they locked in their fights, $22 million, I believe, for a facility that's about 7,000 or 8,000 less in square feet than we're proposing, but that is that Lexington Firehouse. There were pictures on the website. It is beautiful. It's the gold standard of firehouses in the Northeast and probably throughout the country right now. It is as green a building as you want, they generate all their own electricity, they generate their hot water, they are the first firehouse in North America, I believe, to have a heated floor, so when the apparatus comes into the bay in the winter in harsh weather, it melts the stuff right off it. It's great for the equipment, even walking on the equipment. You know, today, there was a beautiful dedication at the firehouse for 9/11, and getting there a little early and seeing a, I think, a leaf blower trying to get some of the water off the floor, because it's just hard to get in inclement weather and just trying to wash the floors. But this building is completely green, it is, looks like it's been there for 75 years. They built it in a way, it's less than a block from the Lexington Green, so it's a very historic district, and they built it in a way that it looks like it's been there for 75 years. It's just an absolutely beautiful building. But again, looking at the cost of that, so that was $22 million, and that was seven years ago when it started, and if you look at Woburn, it was a couple of years after that, and it was $21 million. It's not as ornate a facility, maybe, on the inside, it's beautiful, on the outside, it's not, it doesn't have that wow factor, but, so you're looking at costs going up about 8% to 10% a year, which is another reason why it just makes acting now so important. I mean, I think we talked about earlier today, one of the first, not first, there's been many fire studies done in Winter over the past 40 years, but in '97, there was a plan to build a fire station for $3.5 million, and it got put off, and it would be like, okay, we'll come back with it in a couple of years, and then a couple of years turned into the Fort Banks, and then...
Would you hear anything you say?
It's very, it's hard to hear.
Okay, apologize.
Can you start over?
Yeah. Good evening, thank you for coming. No, looking at the cost of projects and how they've changed in the past several years, and looking at Lexington, that is a state-of-the-art, beautiful, gold-standard firehouse that was built for $22 million. It was started in 2017, and then you look at Woburn, which is another beautiful, state-of-the-art firehouse, maybe not all the bells and whistles of Lexington, that was built for $21 million three years after that. And we're looking at a project that, through all the studies, through all the years that we've been doing studies on firehouses, back in '97, there was a plan to build a firehouse for $3.5 million, and the town decided it wasn't the right time, but the firehouse time was coming. And then two years later, the Fort Banks School came up, and then two years later, the Cummings School came up, and then four years later, we hit the Great Recession of '08, '09, and then a handful of years later, this beautiful building came up. So we don't know what the future holds. We know the present, we know the cost, and we know that the future does hold about an 8% to 10% increase each year, but we just don't know what's going to come up next. What's the next emergency that happens that we have to address and the fire station gets put on hold once again? You know, we heard of somebody, I think the chief had talked to somebody who, 60 years ago, chief, if you could tell that story.
Hey, well, I was at Woodside Hager the other day and ran into a retired fire lieutenant, Lieutenant Burdette, who's been out for, he's been retired for 30 years. I only worked with him for a few years. And he told me that one of his first jobs in the fire department, almost 60 years ago, was to drive into Boston and to pick up the plans for the new fire station that they were going to build on Revere Street, where 2 and 4 Kennedy Road are now. So 60 years ago, there was a plan to build a new fire station. In 1993, there was a plan to build a new fire station. In 1997, there was a plan to build a new fire station. We spent a lot of time and a lot of money talking about building fire stations. 1997 study said rehabbing the existing stations that we have is no longer an option, that they would, on too small a footprint, they were too small buildings, they were beyond their useful life, never mind any future expansion or any future plans for the department, and here we are, 30 years later, 30, almost 30 years later, and we're still talking about the same thing. The cost, like the council president said, the cost goes up 8% to 10% every year. This location is uniquely situated, it's the only location that is phase one of the two-phase plan to construct the Public Safety Building. You can't get to phase two if you don't get to phase one. This is really a unique location to do this. The only other area that was discussed was coming up Pauline Street from the existing fire station to the existing police station. That involves several eminent domain takings, some of them hostile takings, it was going to take potentially a very long time and a lot of money to do it, and it was not an ideal situation because it displaced the existing fires. Where are we going to operate for the two to three years that this project goes on? It disrupted fire service from this side of town. Logistically, we can't all operate at the Shirley Street Station. All of our equipment won't fit in there, we have absolutely no technology in that building whatsoever. Anybody who's been in the central fire station knows, we have redundant dispatch capabilities, God forbid something goes down at our central station or central dispatch in Revere, we flip a couple of switches and we broadcast into all of our dispatching from Pauline Street. That would all have to be relocated at a cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars, only to throw it away in a couple of years when we move into a new facility. This makes the most sense, this is phase one of the two-phase project, that's why we're really trying to bring as much information as possible to everybody through multi-faceted approach, whether it's the website, whether it's the public meetings, whether it's the mass mailer that's going out, we're trying to get as much information into the public as possible.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just curious...
Could you please state your name for the record, please?
Shilla Burns-Maglin.
Say it again? I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you repeat your name?
Shilla Burns-Maglin.
Sure. Shilla Burns-Maglin.
Which I would have said.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, and I might have missed it, but we're talking about eminent domain now, why, and I've read the article about responding, although my opinion on that one, why not the middle school? Give me specifics, why the middle school location?
Sure, Council President LaTieri?
A few thoughts right off the bat. The location that we're proposing, the Kirby Funeral Home, the Wildsworth Building, and the current police station is 50,000 square feet, 51,000 square feet. The middle school location, assuming the rink stayed there, the middle school location is 92,000 square feet, so there's a lot of space. You would never build, or even try to build, just the fire station down there, you would probably do a project in its totality. The cost of that project is upwards of $80 million, which I don't know if the town has an appetite for, and you still have 40,000 square feet of space that you're not really going to build a home right next door to it. The other item is if you look at the police station, the current police station we have, one of the benefits of that police station is that we're able to have a fire range underground, okay? Now, you wouldn't want a fire in range on the first floor or second floor of a building, so you would want it underneath. To dig under the middle school would be extremely, I'm not saying it's impossible, nothing nowadays is impossible, but it would be extremely costly. Also, one of the major goals of the middle school, and it's been quite a long time, right? It's been seven years, but one of the goals that has been pretty much consistent throughout is that whatever went there should have some economic benefit to the town in terms of a revenue stream, in terms of stimulus for businesses and such, so that's something that has always been a goal of that project, of whatever project ended up going there. You know, it's not, the initial thought is, we own it, right? So it's cheaper, we're saving on the cost of that. Cost of demolition is slightly higher, but that's not a big deal. The big plus is that you're saving on the cost of purchasing the land. The negative is you're not seeing any economic benefit from that land, and I think that, you know, not only myself, past councilors, this council believes by vast majorities that you need some sort of revenue stream from the town. We've been told since 2008 that the town doesn't have a spending problem, it has a revenue problem. We're trying to think of outside the box, we're trying to think of ways to bring net revenues to the town without affecting other departments, like the schools or fire, police and such, DPW, they're already strained as it is. So those are the major reasons. The size of the lot is expansive, you would want to do a totality Public Safety Building if you were to build...
if you were to build there. The cost becomes pretty costly, and you're not getting any sort of economic benefit from it. So those were the reasons in the end why that site wasn't deemed to be worth.
And will you build, do, buy existing fire stations?
Well, I, if we look at the existing stations as they are, the Shirley Street Station, which certainly that location would be ripe for redevelopment. Around that entire area, there's apartment buildings, condominiums, there's been significant redevelopment or development in that immediate neighborhood. We would certainly have more to say about what happened on the Pauline Street Station, given that that's in the historic district. And whether the town kept it or whether the town sold it, it would have some say as to Any others, ma'am?
Carol Dolan.
I'm sorry, one more time, could you state your name, please?
Carol Dolan.
Carol Dolan.
Precinct guy.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, is there any type of contingency for the middle school area if revenue source such as the rec center turns out not to be feasible? Is there a way that it would end up in condos or anything like that? I wanna begin by saying I'm very much in favor of the whole, and I appreciate all of the work that this committee has done, hugely supportive of Winthrop Fire and Townhouse and everything they've done, so I do appreciate that. Just wondering, adding that, and also, chief, if you could talk about the footprint of the proposed plan? I think some of the concerns that people have, that I've heard, that they'll get too tight. But it's a big building there, it has sort of a sense of imposing facade on the front, so if you could talk about the footprint, how it's gonna be set back and how it's gonna go.
Well, we'll take your second question first. So as far as the setback of the building, one of the advantages to the location that we're discussing on Winthrop Street is the depth of the property. The building would be set back significantly far from the street. If you look at some of the renderings and the drawings, while we continue to say that this is not what the building will eventually look like, if you, we're gonna push the website, but there's a couple of slides on the website where they show, again, we'll talk about Lexington, the depth of the building, we'd be able to pull the apparatus, the biggest apparatus we have in the town is the ladder truck. We would be able to take the ladder truck completely out of the building and still be on firehouse property. It'd be on the apron of the, in the front of the building, and be, at that point, be able to turn out onto Winthrop Street. There's more than enough space there. It would have, roughly, the drawings we've shown, that's a hundred-foot deep apron for pulling apparatus out onto the front. So it would be set back significantly from the street. And as far as your first question-
I'll hit the first question. On the, on the first question, on the, you know, I assume you're saying if the proposed sports complex did not come to fruition, would we look back at apartments or such? I have no desire personally, I'm one person, no desire to put apartments in, in bulk. I mean, in the plan we proposed, it was to have three townhouses just to try to finish off that neighborhood, to give them some distance from anything that is there. But to have a, a large number, I know, you know, three or four years ago, there was a thought to put 150 units there in an L shape going down Walden and across Pauline. I don't believe in that. First of all, anything, and we thought a lot about this, 'cause there are, you know, it is recreational space. It has been a park. I, you know, I, the thought was to try to keep it recreational space. And when you're talking about apartments, first of all, we talk about apartments versus condos, and the revenue difference between the both is, is substantial. The tax revenue from a apartment building versus the tax revenue from a condo is almost 40% less. So that's the first thing. The second thing, when you're building, if you're building, you're not gonna build 20 apartments there, you're gonna build 100 apartments or whatever, and if you do that, the potential, and I talked about it earlier, net income to the town is not what it looks like. You might say, wow, we're getting $200,000 in, in tax revenue, but we could potentially have, you know, 25 kids coming in at $20,000 a kid, it's 400, it's $500,000, and now what happened to that money? Not that, you know, I think development is good, incremental development and proper development done, you know, if you have 10 units, you're gonna have development. There's gonna be development in the center, the, the new zoning is, is made for that, so you could have mixed use. You're gonna have those small incremental developments, and that's the way the town will grow. But to have, I don't think we can absorb 100 units or 70 units at a shot in one space like that. I just think it's a detriment, you know, we look, I mean, they'll talk about parking until 2100 probably, but they talked about it in the 60s, they talked about it in the 70s, and they're still talking about it, and it's always an issue. So you gotta be cognizant of parking, you have to be cognizant of, we have three beautiful new schools in this town. I consider them new, even though they're, you know, almost 20 years old now, a couple of them, but they're still new, but they are almost at capacity. And, you know, the MSBA is so generous in their funding and helped the town so much by paying almost 50% of the cost of all three of these buildings, but it comes at a price, and they do the demographic search, and they look and they say, okay, this is what we will build a school for you for. So we look and we look at this incredibly nice building, and it's built for roughly 900 and somewhat kids, and right now, there's just over, almost 1,000 kids in here. Not that they're packed in like Zardines, but you don't have tons of space to absorb. You're gonna have that natural attrition. People move, people pass, and people's houses get sold and families come in, and that's how the, you know, you keep the vibrancy in a community, and, and you absorb those costs, but to just have so many people come in at once, I think it's just a detriment to the town.
Well, I appreciate you looking into the situation. Is it just a problem of, you're over working in the middle of the city, between, you kind of, of the town, the rec center, and then by the, so, you're going to, you're going to stay there?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, the parking issue. I know we have, we have municipal parking behind our church, that's, how much parking would you have the fire department, the police officers for their personal cars?
Thirty-something spaces. I think right now, if you look at the fire station now, I think, what do you have at the current firehouse on Pauline?
Three.
There's three spaces now, on the current firehouse, there's three spaces, and at the Shirley Street-
Maybe eight.
Eight. And in this proposed one, not exact, but I wanna say 33 to 35 spots.
Well, there's 17, just, the space gonna be between the police, the existing police station and the new fire station, that roadway going up, there's gonna be 17 spots there, which is 17 more than they have now.
And then there's significant parking on the other side, left side of the building, base of the building.
Right. Hope they have a Masonic building?
On the Masonic also.
Do you have a Masonic hall?
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a bike rack, too.
Anyone else?
Do we have any idea of WCAT? You, you don't know how many people are watching, do you? No way of telling that. Okay.
Do you put it on Facebook app so people can hear it?
This will be on WCAT's Facebook page, it will be on YouTube also within a day, day and a half, and it will be replayed several times on WCAT.
Or go on the manager's, nobody's really sends it out on email.
We could put a link on the website, yes. And it will also be on www.wintofirestation.com, there will be a link there tonight. As soon as we get the link from CAT, it will be on the website, along with all our past meetings and excerpts from each meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, only to stretch out on meetings, 'cause they go quick, and, you know, the way I interpret this empty hall tonight is that it was raining and everybody's home watching it on TV. But a couple of the questions that I would love to take the opportunity, because this is going far too easy tonight than we expected, was just, some of the arguments the first night is government's trying to jam this down our throat. In the world today, a lot of people are questioning government, but I'd like to go all the way back to the Belle Isle Bridge one, President Gill, it's just coincidental you're here, but when that was built, public safety and Winthrop government said, let's bring a water main in from Boston, let's put a gas main under that. Because over in Beachmont, at Short Beach, that's the only water main that ever came into Winthrop. We ever lost that in a storm or anything, or gas is the same way. So at that time, and Chief Paulins can remember in a cold snap, we couldn't heat the houses in Winthrop due to low gas pressure. So we resolved that problem, and that was considered a public safety problem, when your boiler can't function right. And if we ever lost that main over on Beachmont, we had a backup main. If it only supplied fire, uh, fire suppression, it was worth having there. So now, nobody can go out of town, and I bet you if you ask people here, ask people on TV, what the hell is going on in Revere Street, they couldn't tell you. But the line that feeds the Algal Station was deemed to be unreliable. So about three, four years ago, they started the planning for this project. So National Grid begged, we gotta get it replaced, 'cause if that line went down, there was no answer for Winthrop, it could be two weeks without power. So National Grid started negotiating with Steve Call, Public Safety, and they came to an agreement, if you let us dig up Revere Street, we'll put in new power line for Algal Station, we'll put in new gas, and at our cost, we'll do the street and the sidewalks. And the only reason I bring that up is, again, we were talking about the intersection down at Point Shirley. It was looking out for the taxpayer, we've always looked out for the taxpayer. Now they're doing the Revere Street tip project, which is from Cross, uh, no, Cross Street, what the heck is in here? No, come on, I know, Crest Avenue down to McGee's Corner, where they're putting in new gate valves to control the water mains, which they cleaned and relined in the 90s, and the paving that's going around. But everything we do in Winthrop has always been, let's look out for the taxpayer. We took over the ambulance service for the, from the MWRA, where the ambulance was getting paid 250 grand, and now the ambulance service pays the town of Winthrop 48,000 towards our regional dispatch. So now we have a case that we're gonna build a firehouse, and we're not looking, you know, Terry Delahanty and I were as tight as any two fire chiefs. When we used to go to the casino meetings, my fellow fire chiefs would say, what do you have in common with him? And I used to say, we both wanna be the fire chief. And, um, all, all I'm trying to say is, we always kept the taxpayers in mind, and if you go to the calculator that they put up on the town website, the firehouse website, you will see as this all plays out. At any time, I was saying to Chief Wiley earlier, 25 years ago, if they come in and said to us at the firehouse, we're gonna get you guys all squared away in eight years, we'd sign up tomorrow. So we're gonna take first shot at getting this done. We have a manager that has the courage, you know, it's easy to sit back, I'm gonna be here five years, I'm not gonna build anything, I'm not gonna do anything. And I thank him for that, and I just hope that we can dispel any rumors that we're out to hurt anybody, we're not doing this, we're taking the Wadsworth so we can take care of the police department. And again, every project you see around town is making this joint better. And the last time Frank Constantino was on the Last Center project, 'cause there's a lot of, oh, I don't like how it came out, but the last time Winthrop Center was done, it was on a Blight grant, correct? It was, it was money that came from the feds on a Blight grant. So I think the town is looking better, the streets are looking better, and I just ask you as a retired chief who's wishing these guys the best, that just give them the confidence that Winthrop Street is the best spot, and let's move forward with both projects, firehouse first and then the police station. Thank you, that's all I got tonight.
Well done. Thank you, Paul.
Any other public comment?
Actually, I didn't quite understand Paul's point on, you're talking about the original French square? Or the French square as it is now?
No, the original one.
The original French square was actually done by volunteers. There was no granting involved. We did get permission from the board of selectmen at that time, but the way the, the way French square evolved was through a consensus of design from the members that were on the beautification committee at that time, and the volunteer efforts and coordination between the DPW, the water department at the time, some stuff from the fire department, working with the schools and the Winthrop football teams, and basically volunteers and residents within the town. And it was all done by hand. Some work was contracted out through Capone Iron Works for the iron fence that was there, and some handwork was done with experienced masons that helped to put in the, the brick pathway, but the main, and the whole design was, was oriented around a main tree, the big maple tree that was in the middle of the park that Louis Winter, the former tree woodman, had planted some 35 years prior to that. So all of that was all done by volunteer.
But there's sidewalks and the red brick.
That was all done by DPW with Donnie Hodgkins, who was running that at the time. But no grants were obtained, it was all internal, within the community.
I would assure, that was Jenna Wilders.
One more time, any more, any more public comment?
I will say also that there's been an incredible farmer's market that's happened all summer. Farmer's market this year has been really great, and as a committee, we're going to help, have a table at the last two farmer's markets to answer, just a informational table, basically. So a lot of people don't like to come to meetings, they feel, and, you know, they'd rather talk on a more private scale, so we're going to have a farmer's, a mark, a table at the last two farmer's markets from the Firehouse Building Committee, if there's any questions you may have. I'm also going to be hosting a coffee with a counselor, next Wednesday night, location to be heard, to answer any more questions on the firehouse or, or the middle school project, proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Leteri. Just to give you people an update of some of the work, if you haven't been to the meetings, the work that we've been doing here in the committee. One of the things we've been really advocating and striving to do is to get as much information out as possible, whether it's the open meetings, whether it's the regular meetings on Monday nights, website that's up, mass mailings that's going up. I ask you, please, go to the website, the one that Council President Leteri has said, winthofirestation.com, and look at some of the videos that we've done, the videos of the current conditions, of the existing conditions of the current fire stations, a tour that went up, the video went up yesterday, a tour of two stations that we went to, we went to Lexington and Woburn, that we went there. There's dozens of frequently asked questions that have been answered on the webpage. There's a tab for questions, you can ask any question, to ask a question of the committee itself, we'll get the answer to you. One of the really interesting features on it, as Councilor Leteri hit on, is you can host a coffee hour. There's a tab on there, host a coffee, for the people that maybe don't wanna come out to a meeting, maybe they're more comfortable in their own home, there's a, a spot for you to request a coffee hour, and you could have one or two of us will come to you, and we'll answer questions for you, in whatever setting you feel most comfortable in. You wanna get some of your neighbors together, we're happy to come to you. Our goal is to be as transparent as possible, to get as much information to you as possible. And we're trying to do that through several different mediums. If there is no more public comment, I would just let you know that our next regularly scheduled meeting is next Monday at 6:00 PM at Senior Center. That's a regular business meeting. One thing that we did do today, and please look at the WCAT website, or go to, it'll be on the Firehouse Committee website, firestation, winthofirestation.com. Town manager Marino, Council President Leteri and I had a 30 or so minute roundtable where we just sat down and talked, and tried to get some more information out. So it's there, it's on CAT, it'll be on YouTube, some of these other videos are already on YouTube. The information is there, avail yourselves of it, get your neighbors and let them know, try to convince other people, and by all means, please, pass the word, come to the meetings, whether you're pro or con, come to the meetings, we wanna hear from you. That's how we get the information out. Anything, any other member of the committee?
No, just a reminder, too, that the presentation that Council President Leteri made at the council meeting on September 5th is on YouTube, and it's also on the repeat on WCAT. You know, if anybody wants to listen to that again, to hear what is going to happen, or what we're hoping is going to happen with the middle school site, I encourage you to watch it.
With that, I'd like to thank you all for being here. Our next public hearing, very similar to- similar to this one, is scheduled for September twenty-fifth. Our next regular meeting, as I said before, is next Monday night. If there's nothing else...
One more open house coming up, too?
Twenty-first October.
That is in October, yeah. There'll be another open house at the fire station. We've had one over the last weekend, last Saturday, both stations. We'll have to host another one. I, I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Twenty-first.
October twenty-first. There will be both stations again. It will be a Saturday morning, again from nine to twelve. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Council President Leteri, seconded by Chief Lanning. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at six fifty-two.